Expectation, what do you mean? Like, why did you try to do that? It's like, you know.
You good? Awesome. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission of Tuesday, May thirteenth. The meeting is now called up order. I'll ask if we could please take roll call.
Recording in progress.
Let's cut that again.
Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission of May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Thanks for being here. This meeting is now called to order. We'll ask if we could please take roll call.
Commissioner Haveman?
Here.
Commissioner Rodby?
Here.
Commissioner Sade?
Here.
Commissioner Kent?
Here.
And Chair Mercado.
Present. All right, we'll go into the order of the agenda. Are there any commissioners that would like to request a change to the agenda? I assume not. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. City of San Rafael is committed to participate in all of our public meetings. I want to welcome everyone who's made the time to join us today. Renee, if you could please tell us how the public comment will work this evening.
Yes, thank you, Chair Mercado. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. Viewers can also watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda or by dialing area code six, six, nine, four, 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 nine, one, seven, one, and entering the meeting ID, eight, three, six, five, one, zero, four, nine, zero, three, four, pound. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the Live Transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. If you experience technical difficulties, please email Christina, K R S T I N A dot S two D O E S T U D I L L O at cityofsanrefel.org. In order to provide oral testimony, speakers must be present. Displayed on the podium is a timer to help you stay within the allotted timeframe. If you are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside San Rafael. Requests for an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act to provide public comment virtually may be submitted to the Planning Manager's Office seventy-two hours in advance of a meeting at margaret dot Kavanaugh dash Lynch at cityofsanrefel.org for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, oral communications from the public. So next on the agenda is for oral communications for those items that are not on the agenda, but within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. So if you're not here for the item we're discussing tonight, this is your chance to come on up and share any comments. I'm assuming no. Okay. So next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. This will be six minutes of two thousand and twenty-four for the Planning Commission. And I'll move on and see if there's any comments from anyone on the minutes. And if not, then I'll.
And if I can jump in for a second, the vote is the commission accepting that these are the official minutes. So if somebody wasn't part of the commission or absent, you can still vote on the item.
Thank you. So everybody can vote. Anybody you want to make a motion to approve or have any edits?
I'll make a motion to approve the six minutes within the agenda.
We need to open to the public, please.
I was about to do that. Yeah. Okay, if we're not making any edits, then is there any public comment?
If you'd like to comment, please come up to the podium to comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to provide public comment. Please speak slowly to allow for our interpreters this evening.
Comment about the prospective building?
Not yet. We're just approving minutes from our previous meetings. Thank you for asking, no, yeah. We'll be there next.
I see no, no one wishing to comment.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the comments as on the agenda. A second?
A second.
Okay, should we take a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
Commissioner Ken?
Yes.
And Chair Mercado.
Yes. Great. Okay, that's been approved. So next, we'll move on to our action items of the night. The action items for the, this evening is nine thirty Erwin Street. This is a new residential building, a request for an environmental and design review permit, and merger of a proposed eight, new eight-story residential building with two hundred and ten units. And we'll ask if staff has a report.
I think we're just troubleshooting some attendees in the webinar. Bear with us.
While they're working through that, my name is Micah Hinkle. I'm Community Economic Development Director, and it's nice to join you this evening. This is one of a larger project that we've seen in our downtown sometime and really reflective of a lot of the policy adjustments that the city council has adopted through the general plan and downtown precise plan. So we're proud to bring this forward for council consider, or commission consideration this evening. And with that, I'll turn over to the project planner, Christina Estudio.
Thank you. As everyone is aware, the project is at nine thirty Erwin that we're here this evening to discuss. And this project has a little bit of history I wanted to go over quickly. The project was originally submitted as an SB three thirty application in December of two thousand and twenty-three. The current application was formally submitted in June of two thousand and twenty-four, was deemed complete December fourth. There was a slight modification to the project in late December. Originally, there were two hundred and thirteen units, and that was reduced to two hundred and ten in order to provide some additional amenities for the residents, specifically a pool and some other features as well. The current submittal was completed on March sixth. And to kind of start, big picture, the project site is comprised of three legal lots of record at each of the sites at five, four, five, Fourth Street, five, two, three, Fourth Street, and nine, fourteen, Erwin Street. If anybody's been on Google, there are some discrepancies in the, the numbers, but these are the ones we're going with. And each of the sites is developed, currently developed. We have about eleven thousand square feet of buildings on the first parcel on Fourth Street, twelve thousand on five, two, three, Fourth Street, and four thousand square feet, um, sorry, about four thousand square feet of building on nine, fourteen, Erwin Street. Here are the existing buildings that would be demolished as part of the project. Overall, the prod, the applications that are before the Planning Commission for consideration this evening is a major, major environmental design review and a lot merger. The project would merge the three lots and includes demolition of all of the structures and the construction of a new eight-story tall housing development project that contains two hundred and ten residential units. The ground level contains resident amenities, lobby spaces, as well as parking. The amenities will not be available to members of the public. It's just for the residents. Also, part of the application is a request under state density bonus law and associated waivers for height setbacks and civic space. Here's an overview of the proposed site plan, once the project, once the merger is completed and the, the building is constructed. Such a big snapshot of the, the project, two hundred and ten units of those forty-four would be studios. We have seventy-one bedrooms, sixty-seven two bedrooms, and twenty-nine three bedrooms. The average size of the units is nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet. One of the interesting parts of this project is we do have two different zoning districts. Two of the parcels have a fifty-foot base height limit, and one of the parcels has a forty-foot height limit. And the discrepancies between the zoning standards is addressed largely through waivers. Overall, there is two hundred and four thousand square feet of residential space and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety square feet of parking. The project does meet all of the required parking. Actually, it's right near the transit stop, so no parking is required under state law. But they are proposing two hundred and thirty-two spaces and meet code requirements for ADA and bike parking. Give a few, a few elevations and simulations to give everyone an idea of what the project looks like. This is Fourth Street looking east. Here's Erwin looking north. Erwin looking south. And a list of some of the amenities on the ground floor. We have the lobby leasing office, manager's office, coffee bar, work from home area, et cetera. This is a housing development project that is under the regulations of the Housing Accountability Act. It's a state law to promote infill housing development. One of the primary restrictions of this law is that it limits the review of approving bodies to objective standards and limits the ability of a local government to deny a housing project, reduce the density, or make the housing development infeasible if it complies with objective standards. I'm going to take a second just to go over objective standards for those of, in the public who, who might not know. Historically, in planning, we had design guidelines and language like the project blends in lovely with the community, and the state has said, we can't do that anymore and are required to rely on objective standards. So on the left, there are some examples of objective standards and some on the right that are subjective. So on streets less than twenty-six feet, a minimum of two additional parking spaces shall be provided. Bike parking shall be required for all non-residential buildings having thirty or more parking spaces. So the clear numerical standards that are easy for, for developers and the public to understand. And on the right, subjective language is the spaces should be conveniently located relative to the dwelling unit which they predominantly serve. So just to add another layer of the lens that we're reviewing this project through. We also, to add another legislative layer, are dealing with state, state density bonus law, which is a law that was enacted in nineteen seventy-nine and allows developers to increase density in residential projects to exceed that allowed by the general plan. One of the key parts of the density bonus law that the Planning Commission is going to come across in this project and others is a difference in the terms between concessions slash incentives and waivers and reductions. A concession incentive is a reduction in a development standard that results in an identifiable cost reduction that allows the project to be financially viable. We're not dealing with concessions and incentives this evening for this project. I just wanted to highlight it because we do have a number of projects coming forward. What the project does request are waivers and reductions. And a waiver or reduction of a development standard is being requested. And a waiver is when the standard would have the effect of physically precluding the construction of the project. So this project, it's civic space setbacks and step backs. This is the most typically requested reduction, and we're going to see this again and again and again. Unique to the downtown precise plan, there is no density limit in the general plan. And what that requires a developer to do is to first design a base project that meets all objective standards. And for this, as I mentioned earlier, we have two different zoning districts. So the base project is a four-story building on part of the site and a five-story building on the other part. And they carve it up and come up with an average unit and the total number of base units. For the proposed project, the base project is a hundred and seventy-seven units, and the average size of the unit was nine hundred and sixty-one square feet. We then plug all those numbers into our state density bonus calculator. And one of the weird things about the state density bonus law is you always round up at every single stage. So sometimes the math doesn't seem to make sense in how we would normally do math. So our base requirement in the city of San Rafael is ten percent of low-income units, which per density bonus law and our city's resolution results in a twenty percent density bonus increase. So from the hundred and seventy-seven units, that gives us thirty-four point five units, which rounds up to thirty-six. And therefore, the total number of units that are allowed at the project site is two hundred and thirteen. Overall, the project proposes two hundred and ten with the average size of nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Here's a quick schematic of the base project in case anyone wanted to dig into more detail, and I can pull it up later through questions as well. Just wanted to take a second to highlight the architecture and design, but I'll really let the applicant team speak to that. But overall, the design does meet the objective standards in the downtown precise plan. It includes recesses and projections, has a recess courtyard and pool on the fourth floor, balconies, utilizes a variety of building materials, et cetera. This is the east elevation. North elevation. West. South. And there's the color palette that's being proposed. Landscape plan. Just going through these quickly because they've been in the agenda packet. The next issue I want to highlight on is the project's compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, is a state statute that was passed in nineteen seventy and requires local agencies, state agencies, to go through a process of environmental analysis and disclosure. And this is a mandatory part of our decision-making process tonight. Under SEQA, you go through a, a little flow chart, and the first question is, is the project, is, is the activity a project under SEQA? And here, we're dealing with an entitlement that the Planning Commission is considering, which is a project under SEQA. And we then go down to consider whether it fits in one of the statutory or categorical exemptions. The proposed project was evaluated for consistency with the class thirty-two exemption, which is for infill development. And it is really specifically for a project like this. It is located within the city limits. It complies with the general plan and all applicable zoning designations and regulations. The waivers do not affect a project being determined to be consistent with, uh, to be able to use a class thirty-two exemption. The project site is within the city. It's no more than five acres. And as an attachment to the staff report, there is a very thorough report done by Raincom Consultants. The consultant was selected by the city, paid for by the developer, and is an independent third-party review that the city hired. And they determined that the project site has no value as habitat for endangered or rare species. Approval of the project would not result in significant effects related to traffic. And recall for traffic under SEQA, we're talking about vehicle miles traveled. And as this is located next to the smart station, there are significant concessions that are given for those V M T calculations. So I can imagine some people in the audience hearing there's not going to be traffic impacts from two hundred and ten units. And just wanted to phrase that the lens that we're looking at under SEQA is vehicle miles traveled. And so overall, the project is identifying and clustering people in development along the one-on-one corridor and near the smart station, which overall has a more beneficial impact on traffic as far as the environmental analysis is concerned. And lastly, the site can be adequately served by all public utilities and services. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, there are two entitlements for consideration by the Planning Commission. We have the environmental design review and a lot merger. In order to approve the project, the Planning Commission must make the findings of approval on the screen here, that the project design is in accord with the general plan and the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the zoning code, that the design is consistent with all applicable site, architecture, and landscape design criteria and guidelines for the zoning district, that the project design minimizes adverse environmental impacts, and that the project design will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, nor materially injurious, injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And we also have the findings for a lot merger. It's a little bit simpler. I wanted to take a second. There were a hundred and eleven conditions of approval, and the high level, I just wanted to highlight what the intentions are with the conditions of approval. Overall, the project will have to comply with the California Building Code, with fire code, and all applicable codes under the guise of the Department of Public Works. The project was reviewed by all agencies. They provided the condition of, conditions of approval specifically for the project in order to ensure that the construction is done in a manner that most affects neighbors the least. We have a very robust requirement for a construction management plan that requires evaluating where construction vehicles are going to be parking, where employees are going to be parking, traffic control, security fencing, material deliveries. And that plan will be required to be submitted to the city prior to issuance of a building permit and will be reviewed by the chief building official, planning department, and public works. There's also a requirement for a construction noise and vibration management plan, which includes the specific hours that are allowed, noise limits, and a specifically identified noise liaison so that neighbors don't have to call a random number in Pennsylvania. They can call somebody who's local to try to get help fixing their, their issues if deliveries somehow show up at six AM on Sunday, which they shouldn't. Overall, the project is consistent with the precise plan and the zoning ordinance largely that will be enforced through conditions of approvals. There are conditions of approval for affordable housing, mechanical screening, compliance with the water-efficient landscape ordinance, landscape and lighting. And the last one on the screen is that the merger will require to be finalized prior to issuance of a grading and building permit. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the applications as presented, subject to conditions of approval. And we also have a number of alternatives if the commission would like to, to discuss those. Thank you for your time. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. That was great. All right, open up if there's any questions from the other commissioners to staff. I'll let it marinate a second. Go ahead.
A couple of questions.
Please.
As Commissioner Haven, I have, I have a couple of questions, and I think most of them are appropriate for now. Some are just clarifying. Number one, in, in the document, you talk about the front, side street, side and back. Front is Erwin, side is Fourth Street?
It's, it depends. So the analysis was done based on how the property lines are now. And what our code says is the most narrow portion of the property is the front. So I think there's a footnote in one of the tables that outlines which is the, the front and the side. But I bet the applicant will be able to speak to that more specifically.
Okay. And just for, in terms of the class thirty-two exemption, just to clarify, in, in my mind, it's essentially saying because they're so close to public transportation, probability that they use the transportation results in fewer vehicle, vehicle miles traveled than if they were more distant from public transportation. Is that kind of the essence of it?
Kind of the essence. So with, there's sort of two discussions there. I'm going to piece them apart. So there's vehicle miles traveled, which is one of the components of a class thirty-two exemption. Overall, the state has created this class thirty-two exemption to capture projects that the state legislature has determined is generally not going to have environmental impact. So generally, a project within city limits that's substantially surrounded by urban uses, served by, uh, public utilities, is not going to have a significant impact on the environment. They've given us five criteria to go through. The most significant is that we look at air quality, vehicle miles traveled, and those other criteria. And I think Leila is raising her hand, our, our city council, and I will see if she has other comments to add.
So why is there a team add up? Uh, Leila is from BWS, which is our city attorney, outside consulting support. So I think she can kind of dive a little more into the class thirty-two or in those discussions. So with that, turn over to Leila.
Sure. Thank you so much, Micah. Good evening, commissioners, and good evening, uh, everyone in the chambers. My name is Leila Mojraf Dinesh. I'm a partner with Burke Williams and Sorenson, and we've provided some outside counsel support on this project. I can dive a little bit more into the class thirty-two exemption generally. This type of SEQA exemption is essentially built for the type of project that you see before you. It deals with projects that are on five acres or less that are going to that are going to be consistent with your general plan, consistent with your zoning, and that are generally surrounded by already developed uses. The idea, it's called an infill exemption, you know, because the idea really is just to kind of fill in areas where, that are already surrounded by development. And there's been obviously also some changes on traffic that have, at the state level, that have also kind of entered into this analysis. Specifically, traffic used to be analyzed by a level of service, which dealt with, you know, wait times, idling, times at red lights, et cetera. Ever since the passage of, I think it was SB seven forty-three in twenty fourteen or so, the calculus has changed to a vehicle miles traveled analysis. And so what the SEQA analysis here did was look at, well, how many trips are going to be generated by this project, subtracting, of course, the number of current trips, which is for an office use, and then also taking a look at how far people will be traveling, given, you know, the residential nature of the project. And what the analysis showed was that overall, the impacts would be less than significant because the project is so close to transit and does not trigger any of those kinds of screening thresholds that would require additional VMT analysis. So that's kind of a general overview. Happy to answer any additional, more specific questions as well.
Okay, thanks very much. I, I think I'm good. Appreciate your stepping in.
Sure.
Last question is, is on table two. Again, I think this is just clarifying, the, the step back. Items on, on table two, on page ten. Required is ten feet at thirty-five feet tall, proposed is zero, and then it says complies.
That is one of the waivers.
Okay, understood.
Yes, and the tables outline where the project complies with. Think of this as where state density bonus is a little bit wonky. It complies and where it doesn't comply, they've asked for waivers.
Okay, I was just confused because in the height, it says the waiver. Even in those items, it just says complies.
That is probably an, an error then.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on. See if the applicant would like to present anything.
Is that on the screen? Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mike Kim. I'm the senior managing director for Mill Creek Residential Trust, which is the development company. We are a national private firm headquartered out of Boca Raton, and I run the Northern California operation for Mill Creek. We are considered the second-largest multifamily development company in the country. Not that large is big, but it just shows you our, our bandwidth to be able to pull off a substantial project such as this. Can you go to the next page, please? We were recently recognized by the National Association of Home Builders, which is sort of the national organization that, that monitors and oversees and organizes multifamily and for-sale housing builders, and we were ranked the highest by them, so we're quite proud of that. And one of the unique features about Mill Creek is that we are fully vertically integrated. And what that means is that we acquire, entitle, construct, market, lease up, operate, and asset manage the entire process internally. And what that gives us is it gives us real-time information, sort of, we know what we're talking about information. We know what things cost. We know what rents are. We know what works or what doesn't work. We currently have twelve operating assets in the Bay Area, which we developed with our partners. So we, we are, we know what we're doing when it comes to this, the multifamily space. And the reason why we're here is because of the vision that you've all expressed in your downtown precise plan. And when we, when we reviewed the document, many positive things jumped out, which was, one of which was just been just tremendous thought that went into it, that was self-evident in the detail and the quality of the document. It's been a pleasure working with your staff. They've been professional and timely every step of the way, which is not always the case, by the way. Having developed in the Bay Area for thirty years, I can assure you that's not always the case. So it's been a breath of fresh air to work with a very professional staff. With that, I'll hand it off to our architect, and he'll present the project to you. And I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Good to be here with you all tonight. My name is Isaiah Stackhouse, principal with Stackhouse de La Peña Trachtenberg Architects. We specialize in infill housing within the Bay Area. As Mike mentioned, we're very excited to work on a proposal that reflects the goals of the city's downtown precision plan. You could go to the next slide, please. In our design process, we immediately viewed this site as a perfect opportunity to set the eastern edge of the downtown core as envisioned in the planning document. And we note that later in tonight's meeting, you'll have an overview of the various development applications currently within the city. There's a lot of activity happening in San Rafael, and within that context, what our project design has strived to do is respect the principles of the downtown precise plan to the greatest extent possible. So it is really an amazing site in the downtown. Just outside the front door, there are restaurants on the block, three grocery stores within a block or two radius, a block to a transit center, and a gateway location to the ground, the downtown. It's really, we see it as an ideal location for pedestrian-oriented living, where residents can both benefit from and also contribute to the life of the neighborhood. Next slide. So currently, the site has several underutilized buildings that are mostly vacant and detracting rather than from adding to the vitality of the neighborhood. Next slide. So replacing the mostly vacant buildings, we're proposing a building as covered with two hundred and ten rental apartments. Again, it's a mix from studios to three bedrooms. A unique aspect of the project is it's got ninety-six two- and three-bedroom units. So a very high proportion of the building is sort of larger units that could really suit a, a range of, of households. It does include eighteen below-market rate units, co-working spaces, fitness center, elevated garden, courtyard, and a rooftop terrace, and also a street beautification of this prominent gateway intersection. Next slide. Here's a rendering of the project looking east along Fourth. And so following the precise plan guidelines, created a highly articulated building with a very active streetscape here. We've created a very strong base, middle, top partie to the building, per the plan. We've added vertical elements to modulate the building and add a rhythm of bays and added very strong corner elements. The building is rich in shadow play with projecting balconies, Juliette balconies, window surrounds, and again, or strong cornice lines to create shadow play. Next slide. And so here's a view along Irwin, looking at the Fourth Street facade. And again, you can see the strong base, middle, top, vertical divisions to modulate and, and create a rhythm of bays, projecting balconies, strong cornice line, and again, these repeating, very strong corner elements. Next slide. So here is the ground-level plan. Providing a full new, richly landscaped sidewalk, corner entry into the lobby where there is a coffee bar, the residential leasing office. We have a fitness center, a yoga studio, coming down here to a, a game room and a communal work-from-home space here. We have set all the parking back behind the active facade uses. This is a three-story garage that wraps up, provides two hundred and twenty-two spaces, and at levels two and three is wrapped by active uses. It's all residential units to the street as active uses. Next floor. Here's a typical unit plan, a typical level of units here on level three. Again, it's a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms. The, the eighteen BMR units are also equally spread out amongst the unit sizes, so it includes two-bedroom BMRs and three-bedroom BMRs as well. These are very furnishable units with great light and air. Most of the units have private terraces or balconies or Juliette balconies. It's organized around a central courtyard with pool and lounge. And then there's another lounge up at lounge and roof deck up at level eight in this location here. Next slide. Here are some examples of the beautiful interiors at the ground that we expect to have at the ground-level lobbies, the upper, upper-level lounges, and roof deck amenity areas. Next slide. We're proposing a complimentary palette of rich, earthy materials. We're looking at Eco Stucco, a local company here in San Rafael for a smooth trowel, integral color plaster that really adds, brings a lot of life to a smooth trowel plaster finish. We're proposing warm painted accent siding, dark gray windows and glass balconies. We're really trying to create a high-quality building here that's carefully detailed and designed to stand the test of time. Next slide. Here's a landscape plan. Again, we're proposing a beautiful new streetscape. It'll have new sidewalks, trees, landscaping, benches, bike racks. Proposing, these are wide sidewalks. It'll have generous seven-foot walkways and wide planting strips under a canopy of seventeen trees. Next slide. So this will be a very green building, a hundred percent electric, lots of features like EV charging, solar-ready LED lighting, very low water use, drought-tolerant landscaping, smart irrigation systems, and provide for health and wellness, provides affordable housing, beautified streetscape. It's an extremely walkable and bike-friendly site. It'll be built with low-maintenance, high-durable building materials and state-of-the-art air quality systems. Next slide. It's a project that brings a lot of benefit to the downtown, new residents to enliven the downtown and support local businesses. It'll provide a diverse mix of new market rate and affordable housing units. It will contribute to the state's RENA numbers, and it's endorsed by many local San Rafael and Marin County community groups, housing groups, and environmental groups. Next slide. So it's a project that is consistent with the Housing Accountability Act. It's consistent with state density bonus law, consistent with the city's general plan policies, consistent with the city's zoning and development standards, and recommended for approval by staff, as noted earlier. Next slide. So with that, we'll wrap up our initial presentation. Thank you, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you both. All right, I'll turn it back to the commissioners. Any questions for the applicant team?
I just have one question for the project. Was there a consideration of adding a second loading spot on Fourth Street? For, I know there are two, but adding one for deliveries? I can just see the type of renter in this building. There would be kind of backup at, in the evening hours.
Yeah, so we, we are, as you noted, proposing two, and we're, so there, there's one at each, each lobby area here. So there's the, the main lobby with elevator here, and then the, the secondary lobby here. So there's, there's one in each location. There, there is currently street parking all along there, so it won't require any kind of restriping other than to sort of paint out the, the curb there and, and add signage for loading. So the, the project is talked about two, and I, I think we generally feel quite comfortable in terms of operations, but I think one could always be added at a later date as well, simply by extending the, the paint striping.
Yeah, like Public Works could address it if it's an issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And to answer the earlier question, the front is determined in the precise plan. So the, the precise plan, as Christina noted, the front is always the shortest side on a corner lot. So here, the, the Irwin side is a little shorter, so. But it does, you know, it's interesting because this portion of the site here has a different zoning, but, but no, it doesn't actually front Irwin, so it has no front.
Yeah, I have one question for you.
Sure.
So the exit and entrance to the garage, is there only one on Fourth?
Yeah, there, there is only one. That was extensively studied. We had many meetings with staff and also with, with DPW and, and also with a traffic consultant who, who, who studied it. And the overwhelming consensus was that it, it's really not safe to come out onto Irwin, that it's too backed up, and that there would be too much incentive for people to try to get across all the lanes and make the left turn there. And they really felt that would be a, a dangerous, unsafe condition for cars and pedestrians. So, so yeah, the, the decision was made to put the garage there, which was again carefully studied and, and found to be the safest, best location.
And it will ask them to turn right, correct?
Yeah, and the, it, it will end up with left out as well. Yeah. Yep.
I thought it noted in the staff report that it was right turn.
I'll ask, Joanna, can you come up and clarify? I think when the staff report was being drafted, we were envisioning a condition of approval, and there were some last-minute discussions on that topic.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Qualk, Assistant Public Works Director. In conversations with our city traffic engineer, we reviewed the latest report prepared by W Trans, the traffic engineer from the applicant's end. And based on the trips that are generated and the direction that they're going, we've drafted a condition that will allow staff to kind of like review what's being proposed for signage, striping improvements, including lighting, to make sure there's a safe passage and enough direction to help people get in and out, both in the left and right or east-west direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. I don't know if this is time, but I'm going to ask. So yes.
Was yours related to parking?
No, it was not.
We'll let her go, then you can go. Thank you.
Sorry. I noticed that you do have a great deal of support. This is an important project. It's going to be the first one in that area and starting to change the whole look of that area. But there was one letter that we got from the tenants or the owners of the buildings on Third and blocking the tenant's view. They have three apartments. I wonder if there was any thought to that or any mitigation that could be done?
Yeah, there, there, you know, there has been discussions with the project team and, and them. And, and, you know, we recognize, you know, it is the first development on the block. It's definitely, you know, bigger than what's there, but it's, you know, again, following sort of the, the plan and the, the future of, of the area, we understand it's a change. You know, on our end, we have, you know, while the code allows the building, the, the entire building to be right on the property line, you know, starting above the third floor, we've stepped it back ten feet. And also, it, it's, it's very fortunate, it, it's a, this being on the north side of the block, we ran shadow studies, and it does not shadow them what's we ran shadow studies, and it does not shadow them whatsoever. And then also, we have been in talks to, you know, add landscaping as well to soften.
That's what I was going to ask, if there was trees or something that blocks the view?
Yeah, so that's in discussion, yep.
I'll just jump in and make note that this is one of those issues where we're starting to get into the subjective language. And so the project does meet all of the objective standards that are in the precise plan and unfortunate consequence that I think everybody was aware of when we were changing the zoning for that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question on stormwater management. Is it all being managed through bioretention or?
Yeah, so the project, you know, has a full stormwater management plan and full civil plans. And so, yeah, all rainwater will come down and go through C3 planters.
Right. The reason why I ask, and I don't know a lot about this, I'm not an engineer, but it's my understanding there are some methods for dealing with stormwater and filtering without using bioretention. And the only reason why I ask is, you know, there's a limited amount of landscaping, and landscaping's infinitely more interesting when you're not beholden to plants that are, you know, only used in bioretention.
That's a great question. And the, there used to be, a few years back and beyond that, more options, especially for projects that could qualify as quote-unquote "special projects." This would have been a perfect transit-oriented spot that would qualify as a special project. And those used to allow cartridge systems down under the slab, so you could run the rainwater down there. It would get filtered through mechanical systems. And that also, a big part of those is to actually just slow the flow so that it's not all deluge-ing at once. But really, that's been changed in recent years that basically 4% of the roof area, sorry, the entire roof area has to go to planters that are 4% of the roof area. And, you know, so here, we're able to do that all sort of on the podium deck and then on some of the terraces. So it's all fully treated. It definitely, you know, as you mentioned, requires, it can be trickier for the landscape architect.
A little more constrained.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, we'll close the applicant component, and we will now open this up for any members of the public that are here that would like to speak. Please come on up to the podium. If you'd like to introduce yourself, do so. And we'll do three minutes for anyone who would like to speak from the public.
My name is Sharon Foster, and I am a resident of San Rafael. I don't know how many people here in this room can actually say they live in San Rafael. I have several observations. Smart has increasingly diminished ridership. So this is not the mass transit solution. And the other public transit is also underutilized. If this high-density building, of which there is nothing like in San Rafael, so I don't know why it was approved in terms of saying that it is consistent with what's in the area, because I ask you, planning commission, what else is in the area that is of that height and with that density? I'm unaware. So it doesn't seem to be something that is appropriate, not to mention the fact that, why is it that the traffic around San Rafael is getting extraordinarily difficult crossing? We all talk about Irwin Street. Do we talk about the fact that this is the only entry and exit for thousands of people in the area to get on to the only major artery in the area? This isn't just Eddie Street, that a huge number of additional housing and... And that's the other thing. If this is built on the premise that people are supposed to be using mass transit, then why put in a parking lot for hundreds of cars? Let it truly be a community that is committed to bike and public transit. Let there be enough cars for disabled individuals or something like that. So to use the rationale of mass transit that we know is extremely underutilized, to talk about it being consistent with the area of which there is nothing like it, and already, the streets, how many people try to do shopping at Whole Foods and cross the intersection at Third, at Fourth, at Second? And if you do, do you look at your watch and say, "Am I anywhere near a commute time which spans several hours in the morning and several hours in the afternoon? I better not do this because it's going to be extremely difficult." And so at what point do we talk about the quality of life, which is diminished incredibly by a project and a plan that seems to be in a place that doesn't make sense right near this only access? What's being done to mitigate this street, this access street? Anybody have an answer for how we're going to make Irwin and the exit and entrance more accommodating to a lot more traffic?
So thank you, your time is done. This is public comment, we'll listen to it, and when we'll deliberate, maybe it's something will come up in conversation. Thank you, though. Come on down.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jenny Silva, and I'm the Executive Director of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. And we have endorsed this project. This is the sort of project that was envisioned by the creation of the Downtown Precise Plan. It places 213 units near a Marin County transit hub, one of only 14 transit hubs in this county. It is the ideal location for high-density housing. And I really wanted to come and give San Rafael some kudos. This project is happening because San Rafael proactively planned for the large increases in housing that the state is requiring in the sixth housing element. All the jurisdictions in the Bay Area, all throughout Marin, all knew that this housing was coming. And San Rafael was really the only jurisdiction that made a good, viable, strong plan for how that housing would be accommodated in the place that made the most sense for the city. And now we have a project that's doing it. And I think that's absolutely terrific and something that we can celebrate. MECC tabled it at over 100 events last summer. We spoke to 2,500 residents in Marin. Over 1,000 of them were in San Rafael, and people are desperate for this housing. There are so many people hurting because they cannot find a place to live or they're in overcrowded situations, or they are seeing that their rent is increasing every year, more than their income. And they know that homelessness is in their future if something doesn't happen. So we need this housing now, and we encourage you to approve it quickly so we can have it built as quickly as possible. We sent a letter with all the other reasons why this is good, it makes environmental sense, and will be good for the community. But I really just want to say thank you for all the work that you did to make this happen, and let's move it forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and community members. My name is Sergio Barajas, and I'm a field rep with the Nor County Carpenters Union, Local 35, which covers Marin County, and I represent 100 of members. I'm here today to speak on the importance of labor standards for the upcoming construction project under review. It's critical that any project moving forward in San Rafael be held to the highest standard when it comes to labor practices. This means not only complying with area standard wages, but also requiring contractors to participate in state-certified apprenticeship programs, local hire, and healthcare for all workers. These programs are essential in training the next generation of skilled workers and ensuring safe and high-quality construction. Without clear labor standards, we risk the misclassification of workers, a practice that denies them for fair wages, benefits, and protections. It also opens the door to noncompliance with safety regulations and undermines the responsible contractors who follow the rules. In the long run, this can result in costly delays, substandard construction, and legal liability for the city. I urge this commission to set the tone for responsible development in San Rafael by making the importance of labor standards a non-negotiable part of a project approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, chair, commissioners. My name is Matt Guthrie. I'm a 50-year resident of San Rafael. Used to work for the Community Development Department and had a business for urban planning, architecture, and real estate development in the city of San Rafael for the last 35 years. I'm in support of housing. I'm not here to speak in favor or opposition to this particular project, but I have a question and a request. The staff report presents that the project is consistent with the general plan, and significant time and effort has gone into the formulation of that 2040 general plan. But in the community, there's a lot of question about seeing multiple projects, eight, 10, 12, 16 stories high. And when we talk about consistency with the general plan, my assumption is that these state edicts that came down in combination with the land uses permitted by the general plan, did that, was that seen in that process? Was the city aware of how it's, these concepts would be actually realized? And in talking with a lot of friends and neighbors over the last year or two, people want to know what, how much is this going to happen? Does the city, is the city aware? Has the city gone through an economic analysis, development analysis, where you could start to look at these neighborhoods and start to see what could be done with the use of these state standards? I think it would go a long way to assuage or possibly plan in these different neighborhoods how to deal with what's coming at them. Right now, it's, look, the IJ just told us that 16-story building's going up at the corner of such-and-such. And now there's a, I think it would be a service to the community to have this done in a manner that people could say, "Okay, here's what we're doing." The state edicts, the projects, provide housing, extremely important. The result is a far cry departure from what we have now and a departure from all the years where we were concerned about what urban form we were going to take. And there was a more nuanced response to how to provide housing. This is showing up in different places, and I think people are concerned. They don't know the extent of it. And I think it would be worthwhile to take that economic background and show where this is going. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else before we close the public hearing? Seen, done, all right. We'll close that, the public hearing. We'll bring this back to the commissioners for deliberation, discussion, and anything else. I'm not going to call anyone out, I'll just let you all start. Whoever wants to go first, jump in.
Thank you, staff and the applicant for putting the amount of time and effort that's been put into this project and the community outreach that's taken place. I am in support of this project, and I will be voting to approve it. First, I'd like to say, yeah, I would like to have seen the pool on the south side of the project, even though I know that's helping with the articulation. And that was the other thing that I'd like to have seen more of. And I know that those things are part of where we're getting the project density and making the perform a pencil out. So I don't think this project is perfect by any means, but I do think it's a project that will help us reduce traffic along the 101 corridor by keeping people from commuting and staying in San Rafael instead of getting on the freeway and going to San Francisco or going up to Novato. I think it's also going to provide an opportunity for those in their 20s and 30s that can live here and provide much-needed workforce professional services and as well as service workers. We all know that San Rafael and Marin County is aging. Marin County's population actually was the only one, I think, in the state that decreased by 0.1%. So that's showing that the people that are actually using public transportation and that are going to contribute to our workforce in the future are really not there. So I think projects like this will, you know, I think there's fear. And I think like one of the commenters mentioned, the smart chain isn't being used. But I think these are the projects that actually will allow it to be used because it's convenient. And it's a type of cultural shift and generation where people will be more open to taking it. Again, those are my thoughts on the project, and I think the applicant team and staff for meeting with all of us ahead of time and making sure that we understood the project and what we are being asked. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Commissioner Kent, yeah, I agree with what Samina said. And a little bit more on a minutia scale. I mean, this is undeniably a big building for that area. But I think the architects done a really good job in digging into the toolbox and using everything at his disposal to break up the mass, you know, changing the colors, the materials, articulation. And I think the building details are really nice. I also like the fact that you've added so many amenities into this building. But the one observation I would have is that with two- and three-bedroom apartments, it is conceivable that there will be children living there, too. I think the amenities are really adult-directed, and you might want to give a little bit more thought to the possibility of children living there. And those are my comments.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a couple things. One, that I support this project. I want to apologize to the applicant and staff for not being particularly accessible before this meeting. But, you know, I think this is a really good project for the space. I think, you know, as the economist on the commission, I do look at the implications for the surrounding businesses. And the grocery store is going to be very happy that this is going in. I think Fourth Street will benefit enormously. You know, I could, I won't go back to apartment living, but in my earlier years, I could imagine living in a place like this. And being able to walk a couple of blocks to Fourth Street would be spectacular. So I think this is, it is absolutely a big building for the space. But we're headed in that direction, and I think that this is a really good spot for it. So I will also be voting to approve the project. And thanks again, yeah, thanks to staff and applicant. I think it is a really well-put-together project. Thank you.
Thank you. You're good, no other thoughts? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I, you know, I appreciate the public comment. I'm glad you're here. It's hard to sort of be alone, so I just want to recognize that. I think your comments were well-received. And giving an understanding that this is something that's new and different is always challenging. But I appreciate staff coming in and out the gate saying, "These are limitations of this project under the Housing Accountability Act." I think that was really good. These kind of projects, if there's a queue, great comments. It's good to highlight that. So what we can do is understand the parameters and what the limits are. But I would say applicant team, staff team, for the community, it's good for them to be educated as well ahead of time so they know the lane and what they can do. We can't do any more public comment, I'm sorry. And so it would be great to have that. I know you're doing that, but continue to do that. Because if this is that change that we're being forced to get into, this is a great start. It's a good project to start, we're going to learn from it. I like that public's work will continue to look at the traffic issues because that is what jumped out at me. I take that corridor going to 101 North, and it's bad. This is going to be probably better, as my teenage daughter would say, you know? So, yes. And so there's going to be a lot of that we're going to have to struggle through. But as for this project, I think it's a great project. I think it's a step in the right direction. It's what needs to be done through the education and working with the public. Applicant team, continue to engage with the public. I hope you do, so they understand that. That's going to create a good relationship as these projects continue. as these projects continue down the line. And so overall, yeah, I'm supportive. I have really no comments or changes or anything that I would suggest amendments to the resolution, so if we don't want to deliberate more, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution for the environmental and design review permit and lot merger for a new residential building with two-hundred-and-ten residential units located at nine-one-four Irving, five-four-five Fourth, five-twenty-three Fourth, and determining the project is categorically exempt of the state sequel guidelines.
This is Commissioner Haveman, and I'll second the motion.
Great, so we have a motion, a second. No edits, no changes. And you got the motion, who took it? Who, good, then we'll take a ruffle.
All right, Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sade?
Yes.
And Chair Mercado?
Yes. Okay, so that item is approved, and that will close that out. We'll move on to our director's report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Chair Mercado, once again, Micah Hinkle, Community Economic Development Director. In light of, of the comments coming out of the public for the previous applicant, uh, application, and really the sentiment of the different articles coming in, I wanted to actually bring forward a development pipeline overview that I actually presented to the Council Economic Development Subcommittee. To kind of the, the public sentiment, there are changes coming in, there are a good amount of projects contained within our pipeline. Some of these projects will be presented to the Planning Commission, so what I will ask is that you more look at this as informational items, but not comment on any invisible projects. Just really just more, this is to bring you up to speed on at least what staff is working through, and the amount, and it's somewhat unprecedented from my experience in almost twenty, twenty-six years within a local government, the type and level of projects coming into this community, it's significant. They're also layered in complexity, and when we look at code requirements, state laws, you know, build-the-remedy component, there's so many different layers to these projects. And my hats off to our planning staff. I mean, Christina was example on a previous project of really the type and level of analysis that goes through, along with the applicants, they really, you know, working with good applicant teams really do recognize some of these parts. We're also working through a new general plan and a form-based code, which is different, definitely for this community. What I will say, though, as we go through this pipeline, three distinct areas, right? North San Rafael, downtown, and a little bit of, I call it East San Rafael, but it's just in case it's Point San Pedro, but closeout of that project that's been middle of part of thirty years under development. So with that, we'll go over the development pipeline overview. So we broke it up in, into different layers, and, and the reason why we, we've done it this way, too, is also to provide to our utility partners. One, one area that, that definitely comes to mind when I start looking at the amount of development is, is basic infrastructure support. So we did break it up in, because we have separate sanitation districts to make sure that our partner is actually aware of the development pipeline, so when they do see these things, we can also evaluate the cumulative impact over time, also to key in on the developers, let them know really the different processes for this, and there may be other projects who are after the similar capacity within those systems. So, next slide, please. So starting within North San Rafael, you know, as the commission saw this project back in the winter months of 2024, and North Gate Project, that's moving forward, largest project in Marin County history, we're starting to work through that project with demolition permits. So that, that is starting to move forward within that, that timeline. Recently received permit applications, forty-forty Civic Center, so that's an office conversion, new development contained on top of the hill there, forty-forty, along with five-five-five North Gate, so that's the former office building across the street from the North Gate Mall. We have a couple other smaller infill projects, when, when I say smaller, it's smaller in terms of what we've seen, these hundred-plus units versus, you know, twelve and forty-five, and those are typically the scale we've seen in the past, smaller end, but these are what we consider infill developments, but a good amount within this area. Also threw in three-hundred Smith Ranch Road, just as a utility upgrade for the Los Alamos Valley Sanitation District, so that's something that there's also working through as a new admin offices, and as that utility district starts to upgrade, too. Next slide, please. Really, the, the crux of the development is coming into downtown. You know, there's one of two slides, and I anticipate this to grow over time. Some of these projects you've seen actually come out of the ground, like eight-hundred Mission, so that's the senior housing project, it's really wrapping up, I anticipate that being completed with the next, you know, three months, probably occupied by then, doing the finished work contained there. That's one of the larger buildings within that. A little background history, actually, I worked on that project, my first stint, you know, twenty-five years ago, so it's nice to see it actually come, come out of the ground, so. There's a couple other pieces on this, you know, Mission, that's the Alderley Project, I can't tell, so far my eyes are getting worse, so that's also finishing up construction on that, so that was, came to the Planning Commission a few years back, and that's finalized, they're final phases for development. Seven-to-three Third Street, actually, this was approved some years ago, took a little bit of time, actually was recently sold to a new development company, and they're actually submitted for demolition permits through that project forward, so that's one that's taken a little bit of time to move forward through the economic cycles, but it's actually finally here, and that's going to be, that's right across from the BioMarin campus, right off of Lincoln. And then some larger-scale projects, twelve-thirty Fifth Street, so that's really just catty corner from, from City Hall, that white office bank building, so that's being, a former bank building is a current application underway for a residential development. Fifteen-fifteen Fourth Street, that one was approved originally as an apartment complex and came back to the commission for approval for a senior development. They're still working with development partners to move that project forward, so to be determined at what point that will start construction activity. Next slide, please. Here's a slew of projects here, different scale and type. You know, obviously we have the Dominican Valley, that project is still early in the process, it's working on the environmental impact report, so there'll be a point that will return back to, to the commission once we finish that analysis there. New large-scale project coming off of seven-hundred Irwin, seventeen stories, this is a different one. This is coming under a different state legislation, so that's still currently under review by staff, incomplete, or the termination, I just believe it was made, so, so working through that developer and those details. And then seven-hundred Irwin, which, I'm sorry, nine-thirty Irwin, which you just actually approved earlier tonight. Wild, Wild Care, that's the beloved, you know, animal hospital that actually is moving forward with construction permitting, they're almost complete, that's taken a good amount of time, excited to see that project start to move towards those building permit issuance. And then Fourth Street and Grand, still working through some technical issues related to archaeological, so there's some pieces that are still continuing to work on that project. So, next slide, please. The Locklomond, excited to say we're, we're nearing the final end of the Locklomond project, so the, the last phase of the residential units, I believe, are few outstanding finals for those town, the homes, the single-family homes. But then we did receive a formal application for the commercial building, last phase, which is the parking lot, remember the little dentist office that was out there, but that project actually coming in as all housing, so not, not a commercial, but with Andy's Market, I think a lot of the commercial needs are met, contained there, so, so that project, we anticipate it's some, some phase bringing back forward to the commission. Each one of these slides, you know, have a different kind of phasing, depending on pre-development, formally submitted, entitled, under construction, so there's different phases we have within there. We continue to get inquiries from the development community, and when I look at the pipeline overall, as these projects move forward, we have yet to build one, right, on these big-scale projects, so I'd love to see, you know, as I said, as they move through this process, actually entitled, financed, and constructed, and really trying to meet some of the community needs in implementation of the general plan and precise plan. But these are kind of the key points that, that are likely going to come through this. I kind of consider these upfront projects as catalyst-level projects, as the market kind of fills out where San Rafael and Marin are within these projects. So as I said, it's exciting times, but it is time for change. And to the, kind of the points of council adopting the general plan and the downtown precise plan, these are playing out, and it's taken some time to kind of get to this phase, but here we are. So a lot of this activity has been really driven by that community engagement and policy approach for these projects, and I always do appreciate the planning commissioner's commitment to support this community and its change and growth, and for the better. So that's my overview of this, and for any kind of comments overall, but as I said, if you have any comments, please do not make them project-specific, but more overall, just project-driven on the pipeline.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. I mean, just out of curiosity, you know, these are large projects, and if they're all built, and right now the city has kind of a housing deficit, I mean, has anybody done the math that all this is built, but is it conceivable there'd be a housing surplus?
I would say no, in terms, and you have to look at really the, the capacity when you look at the overall, you know, the general plan, EIR, and what we anticipated for overall development for this community. I think the difference is those plans are straight off a period of, you know, twenty years, we're getting them in year five, so, so it really is trying to adjust kind of like the, the, the time and table and schedules. What I do, do get concerned with overall when we look at the cumulative is how many units within a certain area, was that planned and identified? So that's why when we look at the, the technical analysis of the sequel review, and it goes to traffic, air quality, greenhouse, greenhouse gas, and utilities, do we have that covered? And that's, that's currently what's being analyzed when we start looking at the cumulative approach of these projects. I think the difference is, is the timing element. That's why when you start looking at the downtown, we see them kind of pop up within the same block. That's why we're, we do work with our utility partners and start to really analyze really, what do these mean over time, and then do we have the analysis covering that? So it is helpful to have them all projected, because then we can build this into our models for analysis. The real question, though, is when will they get built? And that's one I, I just can't answer, because there's a lot of factors that go into those.
Can you comment on that relative to the housing element, though? We have, I mean, are we, are we generally matching the housing element, or are we, you know, in location and number?
Yeah, we're, we're quite deficient in terms of really arena numbers, and really, the, the real goal is built, right, built and occupied, right, and actual housing unit that someone can, can live in and occupy, and we've had a handful of units come in, but really been more second units. So we, when we did present our arena numbers to council, you know, our numbers were, were really shallow, and really that was one of the comments coming in from council, it's like, boy, what about all these big projects we've been titled over time, why have not built? Like, we want to move these numbers forward, you know, Micah make it happen, and I'm like, well, I'm doing the best we can with staff, but a lot of it is market-driven.
But in terms of like location, density of unit, like you were talking about location, I know that it's been a while since I've looked at the housing element again, but we were spreading out through like Civic Center area, San Pedro, like throughout the city.
It's, the, the arena numbers are really the city jurisdictional overall, so there really is not an area.
Yeah, the housing element, though, we had like sites identified.
Yes, no, there, there are multiple sites identified within the housing element, and these are all kind of tracking with that, and in terms of the housing opportunity site, so this is actually playing out. And what we're also seeing, too, is the change and modification of the office market, like these sites are coming available as there's been, you know, the longholders of commercial office space looking to, you know, basically get a return on the commercial investment. There is no office market. There is a limitation of that, so that's why we're seeing this, this kind of change in the land value and switching into housing, which there is a huge demand, you know, who wouldn't want to live in San Rafael and Marin County?
I have a question. On this development pipeline, what does the state consider compliant at what stage? So does everything have to be entitled in order to meet the housing requirements?
Well, there's a reality that when I look at it, and this is my personal opinion of it, is, you know, the arena numbers granted to, to jurisdictions, they're likely going to come short, you know? Because there's other factors that are not in control of a local jurisdiction or city. It really is up to the private market to actually build and develop these, these, these projects. And what I will say, though, for, at least for my, my tenure here with the city, there's been an increased desire to invest in this community, and we're starting to see that with this particular development pipeline. But the goal is actually to build them and occupy them, so that's, that's really where we're, where I'd love to see kind of like our transition to that, once we build them, the hope is that, yeah, these are great projects, they do work, and didn't, didn't come down. I know the hotel project was, there was a lot of concern when that was developed and built, and now it's one of the like most favorite buildings and, you know, occupancies within the downtown, so my hope is some of the other housings, they come in here, it is change, but it is change for the better and a need on the housing. We've, have not developed substantial housing in thirty-plus years, so here's that opportunity that's being presented within this cycle, within this market, and these are the type of projects that we anticipate being brought forth to the commission.
Thanks, any other, yeah, before we open it up?
Yeah, first, I want to, I want to thank you for this. It's great to have this perspective of everything that's coming down in the pipeline. I, I find it both exciting and daunting. You know, the notion of a twelve-story building, a seventeen-story building, it's going to take me a little while to wrap my head around it, but, you know, I think that there's, there's so much that we've gotten used to that, that will get used to, too. But I think for the future of San Rafael, the future of Fourth Street in the downtown area, this, this all bodes really well. My primary concern is around traffic, right? When, when all this is put in place, I mean, you know, Irwin is not great now. You know, what's the potential for redesigning Irwin to, to accommodate the growth in traffic? What, what are going to be the bottlenecks when all of this stuff is put in place? You know, there is modeling that can happen, that can, that can lend insight into that, and I wonder, you know, I'm sure to some extent that's being done, I wonder if, if, if that can be shared, if it is being done. Because the infrastructure, I, I mean, I remember when the smart train was talked about, I mean, the, the conversation was, was a lot around how it would reduce, reduce traffic. Well, that's distinctly not the case in downtown San Rafael. And so, you know, thinking and very carefully about the implications for traffic over the course of the next twenty-three, thirty years, I think it would be a really valuable exercise. But, but basically, thank you so much for this. This is the first time that, that I think since I've been on the Planning Commission that something like this has, has been done, and maybe that's because it's finally a critical base of, of projects that are major incoming to the pipeline, but, but much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, no one else, and we'll open this up for public comment? Anyone here like to come on up and say anything? You're welcome to come on up to the podium, sure?
I'm still Sharon Foster. I'm still, I'm still a resident of San Rafael. I'd like to say that the only reason I'm aware, even though I, I do read our local paper every day, that this meeting was held, is because my husband has office space on Irwin Street, and he received a postcard as a leasing and an apartment, and yet there are thousands of residents, I think, that are going to be pretty damn concerned that a seventeen-story building is going to, is even being proposed, and are they going to find out when it's a fait accompli, or when they're, we're up to the final design of vote? And everybody is congratulating themselves on a good job, except for the people that are saying, how, how are we going to live here? So, and I, you know, I, I think so far, you know, your optimism about BART, I, you know, I appreciate your optimism, but right now they're giving away fares for seniors and for students, and their numbers continue to diminish. for students, and their numbers continue to diminish. And that's, we've had the extension to Larsburg, but that's not a battle to fight right now. But talking about density, I mean, are school districts prepared to manage this density? Is the, the infrastructure clearly isn't. And are the people that are coming in from Boca Raton and other lovely places that happen to be very low density, are they going to help mitigate the cost of the, what are going to be, you know, multimillion-dollar adjustments to, to make it, make it possible for school buses, for public transportation, and for the actual residents and taxpayers to be able to live and work and commute and go to school here? For an ambulance to get through, for a fire truck to get through, you know? Want to keep building buildings? Stop building parking lots. And let's see how that works.
Thank you. Sure. Anyone else?
All right, one more. Chris Hart, resident of San Rafael, 50-year resident, unfortunately. As I said, that is embalming now. This is, this is the business that I'm in. I sat through every single 2040 general plan meeting, every single downtown precise plan meeting, and a couple of things. You've got a good staff. You, we got to make sure we keep them from going other places. It's a big pipeline. You're missing one project in that pipeline. But here's some numbers that I look at. I see 3,451 total units over a 20-year period of time, if I'm thinking around North Gate in particular. I see 609 of those likely to be built, based on my conversations with those people. 18% of that is that number. Of the 609, I see 253 that are either built or currently being built. I'm including 930 Irwin, I'm including Aldersley, I'm including Aegis, right? But 172 of those were 68% are age-restricted. I think what's going to happen is you're going to have a lot of projects that you're going to have to look at and give due time with. I think staff's going to have a lot of headaches to work with. The economics are really, really difficult. 930 is right on the line. An acre of land in downtown is roughly $8 million. That's just a start. It's a $6 million fee, basically, to get through, maybe 5.5. But the economics now are super tight. So I think we're going to unfortunately see a lot of entitlement without things being built. So I think you have a pipeline coming. This is some of it. Some of it is greater than this. But some of them I don't, can't do the economics at all. And I think that's the problem, because it will cause a lot of fear, and maybe it's up to me as somebody to keep talking with people. So I think that you have to put a lot of time, energy, and effort into it. I hope we can build a beautiful downtown, bring people into downtown, reinvigorate Fourth Street. So we have economic development down there, and people spending dollars, going to restaurants, spending time in stores. Hopefully, it's walkable. It's a big risk, and I really don't envy you guys for having to do the risk, or do all the work, and you guys to have to look at all these things. But I do think you're looking at maybe a 30% of this stuff getting built, and the rest of it is just a, unfortunately, a crapshoot. But I thank you all for your time.
Matt, got three yet? I didn't expect to get an answer so quickly. Micah is the right man for this job, so I'm pretty sure. But the one thing I would add to this as well, having developed in San Rafael in Marin County for the past 30 years, there have been impediments. A lot of it has to do with small lots, separate ownerships, the desire to build big projects, the inability to get everyone to partner up. People are, own things for a long time, they're getting good rents, why go through that whole process? Like, clearly, it's happening. And good policy decisions in the future will rely upon not only what's been submitted in the pipeline, but what might be a possible, so that we can be reacting to that in our schools, at our water districts, in our sanitation districts. So I appreciate this, but the next step, and clearly, again, I understand your economic background is the first time in this department that I've seen, the 50 years that I've been involved in it, is something that will help us further determine what the real impact coming toward us is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I appreciate that. See if the commissioners have any other discussion, deliberation, comments for staff?
Thank you.
Nothing else? Yeah. Thank you. I thought that was a really great presentation. And yeah, I mean, I think you hit on the head, the control you have, right, through the entitlement, limitations with the state imposes, but what we're hearing are the market factors, and we just, we don't know. And it's so interesting, when you brought up the traffic, I was, I was thinking, we don't even know what the technology will be in 50 years, where we don't know what traffic will be like. Smart may not even be applicable anymore.
Autonomous vehicles.
Right, right. And other things, like, we don't know. We're thinking streets and roads. We're not thinking airway, and who knows what could be happening there? I mean, there's just, look up, you know, there's all these weird components. Yeah, we just don't know. Exactly. So there is all these unknown factors. So I do appreciate what you're saying and what you provide. I thought that was great. Yeah, I thought it was really good. So I think this is information. Do you want us to take any sort of roll call note? Just acknowledge that that was received by the planning commission, and we appreciate it. And so we'll.
If I may, real quick, just one, to Mr. Hart's comments. I was looking for projects that I know came through the planning commission while I was on the planning commission, and they're not here. And I'm presuming that they died because of the economics. And it might be helpful to have that perspective, right? What's come through the pipeline and ultimately died, to give the community that kind of perspective, to give the commission that kind of perspective, to go along with the projects that come through. Thanks.
Thanks, yeah. Yeah, that's a great idea. All right. So we've accepted it. We'll close that item. Thank you. And we will go to our final item, Commission Communications. If the commissioners have any communications that you want to share with the group, any updates, juicy gossip, information?
No, but I did take a phone call from the representative of 930 Irwin, just to discuss the project details.
Thanks. No other updates? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. With that, then I'll adjourn the meeting.
Recording stopped.